Today, we have a proclamation. Whereas the city of San Marcos recognizes that an understanding, use, and application of geospatial technology is crucial to operating its infrastructure, sustaining its natural resources, planning for the future of its community, and stimulating economic growth, thus benefiting the welfare of the general public throughout the city. And whereas the management, use, and exchange of geographic information is essential for effective decision-making, and whereas geographic information systems, known as GIS, technologies are a powerful tool for supporting emergency services, homeland security, economic development, environmental protection, healthcare, long-range planning, community services, and much more. And whereas there is a need to promote GIS awareness, education, and technical training among various groups in our community to appropriately and effectively use this rapidly developing technology. And whereas the City of San Marcos GIS Work Group coordinates efforts to eliminate duplication, reduce costs, develop standards, and to facilitate the sharing and interchange of GIS data, methods, and knowledge. Now therefore, I, Jane Houston, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the City of San Marcos, Texas, do hereby proclaim the 19th day of November 2024 as Geographic Information Systems Day, and do hereby call upon all citizens of San Marcos to learn about and appreciate the wealth of vital information that can be obtained using GIS technology. Thank you all for what you do, because what you do makes many things much easier to understand. So, and I believe we have some certificates that, and we have an ambassador award, so I'll let you talk about this.
Thank you, Mayor Houston. On behalf of the GIS Work Group, we are deeply honored to accept this proclamation. GIS Day is a global event that celebrates the power of location-based data and the systems that support decision-makers worldwide in making well-informed choices. The GIS Work Group is proud to use our platform to recognize an outstanding colleague for their remarkable partnership over the last year. She regularly engages with the GIS team to explore new technologies and identify areas where GIS can enhance existing processes. She has been a strong advocate for GIS, actively communicating its benefits to colleagues, departments, and city leadership. By sharing these insights and demonstrating the value of GIS to various stakeholders, she has promoted its broader adoption across the city. It is with great pleasure that we present the second annual GIS Ambassador Award to a City of San Marcos employee whose dedication, innovation, and advocacy have significantly advanced the use of GIS throughout the organization, Bridget Levine. We offer accolades to Bridget for her invaluable contributions and steadfast commitment to ensuring that GIS serves our community by delivering accurate and accessible data. Thank you, Bridget, for your partnership. As we celebrate this year's GIS Ambassador Award recipient, it's essential to acknowledge the exceptional nominees whose dedication, creativity, and passion for GIS have also left a significant mark on our organization. Each of these individuals embodies the spirit of innovation and collaboration that this award represents. This year's nominees are Erin Garcia, Zachary Klaputch, Carl Coleman, Freddie Medina, Christy Murillo, Justin Nguyen, Jessica Ramos, and Ashley Shaimouman. Though this award highlights one individual, it is a reflection of the collective efforts of all nominees who push boundaries, advocate for progress, and inspire others to see the transformative potential of GIS. The GIS Work Group extends our gratitude to all the nominees for their outstanding contributions and unwavering dedication. On this GIS Day, we celebrate not just the awardee, but the entire GIS community, whose passion and innovation continue to shape a better future through geospatial insights.
Thank you, and I thank all of you for what you do, because it does make everything easier to understand. So thank you for whatever role you play. I appreciate you. Thank you. Whereas the City of San Marcos proudly recognizes the commitment, dedication, and technical skill development that SMTX Utilities apprentices undergo during the apprenticeship program that lead them to play an essential role in the safe and reliable delivery of electricity to our community. And whereas National Apprenticeship Week serves as an opportunity to highlight the importance of apprenticeship programs in developing a skilled workforce, fostering economic growth, and preparing individuals for successful and rewarding careers. And whereas the SMTX Utilities Apprenticeship Program equips participants with hands-on training and specialized knowledge, enabling them to safely and effectively perform the challenging and often dangerous work necessary to maintain and restore power to the City of San Marcos service area. And whereas through rigorous training, mentorship from experienced journeymen, and commitment to the highest standards of safety, our apprentices embody resilience, teamwork, and dedication to public service. And whereas the City of San Marcos recognizes four outstanding SMTX Utilities apprentices that have recently graduated from the program to become line workers, making a significant milestone in their careers and contributing to the growth and stability of our community's essential utility workforce. And whereas through dedication and perseverance, they have demonstrated their commitment to public service and the safety and well-being of the residents of San Marcos. And whereas the City of San Marcos is deeply grateful for the contributions of our SMTX Utilities apprentices, recognizing them as vital members of our community's infrastructure team who embody the spirit of learning and service. Now therefore, I, Jane Houston, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the City of San Marcos, Texas, do hereby proclaim the week of November 17 through the 23rd of 2024 as National Apprenticeship Week, and do hereby call upon all persons of the City of San Marcos to honor SMTX Utilities Line Worker Apprentices in the City of San Marcos and encourage all residents to recognize and celebrate the contributions and achievements of SMTX Utilities apprentices, as well as the dedicated mentors and leaders who support their growth and success. Thank you for what you do. Thank you for going out in some pretty bad weather sometimes in order to make sure that we've got the power that we need. Thank you for your diligence and your work every day.
Just so y'all know, our apprenticeship program involves 2,000 hours of hands-on training per year. So that's 8,000 hours of training, 906 hours of classroom training, and 384 hours of additional training.
I'd like to recognize those with the certificate of completion. If you could just state your name as we pass the microphone along.
Matt Listonberger.
Frankie Ritchie.
Tyler Freeman.
Agent Garcia.
All right. You and I will hold the proclamation and let the photos begin. A proclamation. Whereas the government of San Marcos, Texas celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community. And whereas according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are 33.2 million small businesses in the United States. Small businesses represent 99% of firms with paid employees. Small businesses are responsible for 62% of net new jobs created since 1995, and small businesses employ 46.4% of the employees in the private sector in the United States. And whereas 79% of consumers understand the importance of supporting the small businesses and their community, on Small Business Saturday, 70% report the day makes them want to encourage others to shop small independently on retailers, and 66% report that the day makes them want to shop small all year long. And whereas an estimated $17 billion were spent at small businesses for Small Business Saturday in 2023, and of those, 53% of shoppers reported they shopped online, and 86% of the shoppers reported they shopped in-store. And whereas San Marcos, Texas supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our communities. And whereas advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country, have endorsed this Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now therefore, I, Jane Houston, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the City of San Marcos, Texas, do hereby proclaim the 30th day of November 2024 as Small Business Saturday, and do hereby call upon all residents of San Marcos to join communities across the country in supporting small businesses and merchants, not only on Small Business Saturday, but throughout the holiday season and all year long.
Hello, Josie Paletta, Downtown Manager. I'm sure many of you are aware, but small businesses are a huge integral part of our community. We have almost 300 locally-owned businesses in the downtown district alone, and I know, it's amazing. And during the holiday season is a time where I know there are lots of online specials from big-box retailers, and we encourage you to shop there as well. However, when you are thinking about your holiday shopping this year, we really encourage you to support a local business. Local businesses are the ones who invest in our local communities. They're the ones who are donating to our local nonprofits and our children's athletic groups, and they really are the backbone of our communities. So I encourage everyone to shop locally, not just on Shop Small Saturday, but also throughout the holiday season this year. And I also want to just quickly share that we'll be hosting a downtown event on December 7th called Mary on the Square, and it will, I know, everyone giggles. We thought it was a silly name, but we kept it because it made people smile. You won't forget it quickly. But we will be featuring a lot of specials from downtown businesses. If you shop at a downtown business and bring us your receipt, we will gift wrap your presents for you on the courthouse lawn. So we're trying to do everything that we can to encourage people to shop local this holiday season.
I love the personal service you get. It's wonderful to go into, I won't name them, but they say, "Look what just came in. I think it would look great on you." So that's what you get when you shop local and not online. Just saying. Whereas in 1903, Orville and Wilbur Wright first harnessed powered flight at Kill Devil Hills, North Carolina. And then in 1927, Charles Lindbergh became the most famous person in the world when he departed United States soil in an American-built aircraft to cross the Atlantic. And whereas in 1939, President Franklin D. Roosevelt established National Aviation Day to celebrate Orville Wright's birthday and signed the Civilian Pilot Training Act, boosting the aviation industry by opening up pilot training to thousands of college students at hundreds of educational institutions and flight schools across the country. And whereas today, the United States general aviation industry is composed of more than 200,000 aircraft, which safely flies over 26 million flight hours and registers 30 million safe takeoffs and landings per year. And whereas general aviation contributes over $247 billion in economic impact and supports 1.2 million jobs across the country, and often serves as a vital lifeline for communities through missions of disaster relief, humanitarian aid, law enforcement, and agricultural support. And whereas in the state of Texas, general aviation brings in over $96.3 billion in economic activity and supports 778,955 jobs with a total payroll of $30.1 billion, making it a vital part of our economy and the everyday lives of our residents. And whereas the San Marcos Regional Airport is categorized as an FAA national asset, one of only 14 in the state, a reliever to both Austin Bergstrom and San Antonio International Airports, it is the Texas Department of Transportation 2022 Reliever Airport of the Year and ranks in the top 15 for economic output out of 264 general aviation airports in Texas. And whereas the San Marcos Regional Airport's total size is 1,420 acres with three runways, 272-based aircraft, 98,000 annual takeoffs and landings, and 17 aviation-related businesses, 60 facilities totaling over 480,000 square feet, and 35.8 acres of available ramp space. And whereas the San Marcos Regional Airport has been managed by Texas Aviation Partners since fiscal year 2010. Now therefore, I, Jane Houston, by virtue of the authority vested in me as the mayor of the City of San Marcos, Texas, do hereby proclaim the month of November 2024 as General Aviation History Month, and do hereby call upon all persons of the City of San Marcos to recognize the important role the San Marcos Regional Airport plays in the economic impact and well-being of the city. This just gets more impressive every year, you know? It's just wonderful.
Thank you, Mayor. Gosh, that was a pretty good recap of the history of aviation. Well, see, it's that brilliant leadership, once again. It really is a, not only is it fun, but it really means a lot to our little company to be able to represent the city, operating and managing the airport on your behalf. And there's about, pretty close, 1.9 million people live closer to San Marcos Regional Airport than they do to Bergstrom or to San Antonio International Airport. So we have a large audience that we haven't tapped into yet. We're working hard on it. We thank you and the whole city team that we work with every day that makes our jobs easier, and we're going to continue to do our best for the next five years to grow the place so it gets more and more impressive year after year. We couldn't do it without all of you, so thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you for the good job. Whereas Texas is home to over 27,000 highly-skilled nurse practitioners with advanced graduate nursing education and clinical training. These dedicated professionals provide high-quality, personalized healthcare to countless Texans, and their expertise and hard work are critical to the well-being of communities throughout the City of San Marcos, Texas. And whereas among their many duties, nurse practitioners perform and interpret diagnostic tests, diagnose and treat acute and chronic conditions, and prescribe medications and other treatments. In addition to clinical service, nurse practitioners educate patients on smarter health and lifestyle choices by focusing on disease prevention, health education, and counseling. And whereas nurse practitioners are highly valued members of the Texas healthcare community, making 1 billion patient visits annually across the state and country to ensure patients can access the care they need. Five decades of research demonstrate the high quality of care nurse practitioners provide, quality that has been extolled by leading policy and government entities such as the National Academy of Medicine, National Governors Association, Federal Trade Commission, and the Robert Wood Johnson Foundation. And whereas nurse practitioners provide high-quality, primary, acute, and specialty care while emphasizing health promotion, disease prevention, health education and counseling, guiding patients to make smart health choices every day. And whereas nurse practitioners work to expand healthcare access to underserved communities, promote equity in care, play a critical role as trusted providers of healthcare, and whereas more than five decades of research demonstrates the high quality of care provided by nurse practitioners and the confidence patients have in NP-delivered healthcare as evidenced by the more than 1 billion visits made annually. Now therefore, I, Jane Houston, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the City of San Marcos, Texas, do hereby proclaim that the week November 10 through the 16th was Nurse Practitioner Week, and do hereby call upon all residents of San Marcos to recognize and show appreciation for nurse practitioners every day.
Thank you so much, Mayor Houston, and thank you to all of you who are out there waiting for your turn. I appreciate you being here. I am a semi-retired nurse practitioner. I actually retired and went back to work part-time at the Texas State University Student Health Center. And all my colleagues that I know throughout this whole area are actually working today. That's why I'm the only one. We are, many of you probably already know a nurse practitioner, have seen a nurse practitioner before, but if you haven't, we're often referred to as the family doctor because we're usually in that kind of role in primary care. So that's why there's so much emphasis on prevention. We can take care of just about anything that you have going on, and if you need a specialist, there's nurse practitioners that are specialists as well as the physicians that you know that are out there in specialty care. I have colleagues that work in hospitals and take care of patients as a hospitalist. I have colleagues that take care of women's health, OB-GYN, psychiatry care. There's a very wide range, and there's also emergency nurse practitioners as well. So we are honored to be here with you today. I'm honored to be here with you today, and side by side with all the wonderful people that are here to receive the honor as well as we are. And we thank you so much for being here with us and for supporting what we can do for you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Hold that, we're going to take pictures. Whereas each small act of conservation, when combined with other innumerable deeds, can have an enormous impact on the health of our environment. On America Recycles Day, we celebrate the individuals and businesses that work together to recycle waste and develop innovative ways to manage our resources. And whereas the state of Texas recycles 27.5% of municipal solid waste annually, but up to 50% is recyclable. Whereas the citizens of San Marcos recycle 27.31% through residential curbside recycle and green waste service, and dropped off over 2,856.5 cubic yards of brush to be mulched during the fiscal year 2024. And whereas the recycling industry employs over 31,000 Texans, putting it on par with the petroleum refining and furniture manufacturing industries, and contributes $2.3 billion through recycling workers' value-added activities. And whereas the total economic impact in Texas is $7.4 billion. And whereas the San Marcos Resource Recovery Division won two statewide awards at the annual Texas Environmental Leadership Awards Ceremony on October 3 for Exceptional Recycling Partnership with Texas State University, and the Sis Meyers Leadership Award for all their programs, and won one regional award for Exceptional Recycling Partnership with Green Guy Recycling. Now therefore, I, Jane Houston, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the City of San Marcos, Texas, do hereby proclaim November of 2024 as America Recycles Month, and do hereby call upon all San Marcos residents, businesses, and visitors to recycle all material that is accepted and purchase recycled container content products to preserve our natural resources and create a healthier, cleaner, and more just world for our children and future generations. Thank y'all for what you do, because what y'all do is phenomenal. You're making a difference in San Marcos and the world. So thank you, thank you.
Amy Tamaides with Resource Recovery. So this is our great team, very dedicated to all the different programs we have, including household hazardous waste drop-off and the reuse warehouse. I know recycling can be daunting, so kind of right now we're saying, "Do the Core Four", which is plastic
A proclamation. Whereas each small act of conservation, when combined with other innumerable deeds, can have an enormous impact on the health of our environment. On America Recycles Day, we celebrate the individuals and businesses that work together to recycle waste and develop innovative ways to manage our resources. And whereas the state of Texas recycles 27.5% of municipal solid waste annually, but up to 50% is recyclable. Whereas the citizens of San Marcos recycle 27.31% through Residential Curbside Recycle and Green Waste Service and dropped off over 2,856.5 cubic yards of brush to be mulched during the fiscal year 2024. And whereas the recycling industry employs over 31,000 Texans, putting it on par with the petroleum refining and furniture manufacturing industries and contributes $2.3 billion through recycling workers' value-added activities. And whereas the total economic impact in Texas is $7.4 billion. And whereas the San Marcos Resource Recovery Division won two statewide awards at the Annual Texas Environmental Leadership Award Ceremony on October 3rd for Exceptional Recycling Partnership with Texas State University and the Sis Meyers Leadership Award for all their programs, and won one regional award for Exceptional Recycling Partnership with Green Guy Recycling. Now therefore, I Jane Houston, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of San Marcos, Texas, do hereby proclaim November of 2024 as America Recycles Month and do hereby call upon all San Marcos residents, businesses, and visitors to recycle all material that is accepted and purchase recycled container content products to preserve our natural resources and create a healthier, cleaner, and more just world for our children and future generations. Thank y'all for what you do, because what y'all do is phenomenal. You're making a difference in San Marcos and the world, so thank you, thank you.
Amy Tamaytis with Resource Recovery. So this is our great team, very dedicated to all the different programs we have, including household hazardous waste drop-off and the reuse warehouse. I know recycling can be daunting, so kind of right now we're saying do the core four, which is plastic bottles, aluminum cans, glass bottles, and any kind of paper, whether it's cardboard or regular paper, just, just remember those first and then call our office for any other questions. Just do those. That includes residents, businesses, and city staff. Thank you.
A proclamation. Whereas the Scenic City Certification Program was developed and implemented to establish a foundation of cohesive scenic standards and land planning practices that advance sustainability through environmental conservation, ecosystem management, and environmental education. And whereas the mission of the Scenic City Certification Program is to support and recognize municipalities who implement high-quality scenic standards for public roadways and public spaces with the long-term goal of improving the image of all cities. And whereas the Scenic City application follows a rigorous points-based system, the categories of criteria and standards are, but not limited to, trees and landscaping along major roadways, city streets, street medians and in parking lots, and permitting process and size, placement, and quantity requirements for signage. And whereas the evaluation process conducts a thorough review of existing ordinances and code language pertaining to the protection of native and established trees, landscaping, sidewalks, parks, trails, and public spaces, signage, lighting standards, standards for landscaping, protection of landscaping during construction activities, utility and cable line programs, litter and graffiti prohibition, dumpster screening, and unique municipal features and special programs. And whereas dedicated members of the Resource Recovery, Neighborhood Enhancement, Planning and Development, Public Works, Utilities Electric Distribution, Capital Improvement, Habitat Conservation, and the Parks and Recreation Discovery Center worked collaboratively to create the document with the clearly stated evidence of each criterion that meets or exceeds the condition for the award. And whereas the city has met additional criteria documenting features and programs that enhance civic beautification, promote environmental sustainability, and improve the well-being of all residents, including having seven historic districts and nine local historical landmarks, being a member of the Certified Local Government Program of the Texas Historical Commission, partnering on the Edwards Agrapher Habitat Conservation Plan, implementing the Structural Control Inspection through the Stormwater Division, which also utilizes cutting-edge data collection technology to inspect over 1,000 inlets annually, sponsoring Keeps San Marcos Beautiful, which has monthly litter cleanups, known as hotspots, and twice-a-year annual river cleanups, the Great Texas River Cleanup and the Fall River Cleanups, recently launching the Certified Habitat Stewardship Program to encourage residents to plant natives to increase biodiversity for pollinators and birds, establishing the Upper San Marcos River Riparian Zone Protection Preservation and Buffer Area, and being a mayor's monarch city. Now therefore, I Jane Houston, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of San Marcos, Texas, do on this 19th day of November 2024 acknowledge the following award, Scenic City Award, and do hereby call upon all persons of the City of San Marcos to recognize these award accomplishments provided to San Marcos by our Community Enhancement, Planning and Zoning, Stormwater Management, Parks and Recreation, Code Compliance, and Utility Departments.
So I just, one shout-out to Brittany for doing a lot of the footwork on all the ordinances that we have to do. This is a multi-departamental effort, and getting everybody to cooperate and provide the information we needed was great, and I appreciate everybody who was a part of that. And then I know this is something we've been trying to go after for a long time, and we are thankful for Scenic City for maybe loosening up one little thing. Thanks.
Yes, thank you. Clearly, this was a, a huge task. Y'all were up to it, and we did achieve these. So thank you all very much. A proclamation. Whereas change is constant and affects all cities, towns, suburbs, counties, and rural areas, including San Marcos, and whereas community planning and long-range plans help direct and manage this change in a way that provides better choices for how people work, live, and play in San Marcos. And whereas the City of San Marcos was recognized by the American Planning Association at the Texas Chapter Conference in Allen, Texas for exceptional planning documents, and whereas the city received a Planning Achievement Award Silver in Environmental Planning for the San Marcos Natural Areas Land Management Plan managed by the Parks and Recreation Department. This award honors efforts to create more sustainable and greener communities that reduce the impact of development on the natural environment and improve environmental quality. And whereas the city was also recognized as a recipient of the 2024 Richard R. Lilly Fellows of the American Institute of Certified Planners Planning Excellence Recognition Program, which is based on the level of training of planning commissioners and professional staff, professional qualifications of the planning staff, breadth and currency of planning documents, and completion of other planning-related projects. And whereas the full benefit of planning requires public officials and citizens who understand, support, and demand excellence in planning and plan implementation. And whereas we publicly recognize the many valuable contributions made by professional parks and planning staff, appointed and elected officials, and the many community members who have contributed their time and expertise to the improvement of San Marcos. So now therefore, I Jane Houston, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of San Marcos, Texas, do hereby, on this 19th day of November 2024, acknowledge the following awards. Planning Achievement Awards Silver in Environmental Planning, the 2024 Richard R. Lilly Fellows of the American Institute of Certified Planners Planning Program Excellence, oh, sorry, Planning Excellence Recognition Program. And do hereby call upon all persons of the City of San Marcos to recognize the awards and accomplishments provided to San Marcos for our park and planning efforts.
Thank you so much, Mayor Houston. So this was the first time the Parks and Recreation Department has ever submitted an environmental planning document for a possible award. It took a very big collaborative effort, not only with the Parks Department, the Fire Department, Emergency Management, but also our external stakeholders with the San Marcos Green Belt Alliance. Mark Taylor specifically, who used to be a, he's a retired city attorney, fine-tuned that document for us. And I was hoping he was going to be able to be here today, but a huge shout-out to Mark for doing those just fine little bullet points for me to get it done. But this is for our Natural Area Land Management Plan. We are on the cutting edge. No one else currently has a document like this. As you know, we have over 2,600 acres of parks and open space in San Marcos, and just under 2,000 of that is natural area. So we have a big commitment to our community to keep it safe. Chief Stevens and I and Chief Matano have spoken over the last few years and again recently regarding, regarding fire mitigation. So that is something that we're going to be closely working on as part of our plan.
And I just love taking the opportunity to recognize the excellent department that we have in Planning and Development Services, their dedication to the profession, to the community. And we got this award because we have a lot of planners that are certified through the National American Planning Association, and we may be adding one more because I cannot officially announce that someone passed their test yesterday, but we're really excited to continue to add to the pool of AICP planners in our department.
Congratulations. That's why she's holding the proclamation.
I will hold it.
Yes. Thank you all for what you do, because I know you do it for San Marcos. The awards are recognition of that, so thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor. Today, we're going to see Elijah Harris get pinned as a firefighter. He started here on April 17th in 2023 and completed his year in, on April 17th of 2024. He is a full, fully capable member of a crew, and we're glad to have him. I'm going to try and introduce his family by memory. His grandma's here, Diane Davis, Renee and Brian Harris, his mom and dad, and his girlfriend, Lexi Mitchell. How'd I do? All right. I'll turn it over.
Okay, and this is one of those repeat-after-me things, all right. I? Elijah, yours?
I, Elijah Harris.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of fire emergency medical technician.
Duties of fire emergency medical technician.
For the City of San Marcos.
For the City of San Marcos.
Hayes County.
Hayes County.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws.
Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you. Congratulations.
My back row, let's come up a little closer. Don't be shy. Just get where I can see. All right, looking this way, everybody. One, two, three. Take two more than I have. One, two, three, last one right here. One, two, and three. Lovely, thank you.